We call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board for order. This is a meeting for public hearings and a special meeting, May 30th, 2019, 7:00 PM, in El Bay School Library. Start with a roll call.
Martin.
Jamie Lawer.
Susan Ross.
Roger Moore.
Rich Canong.
Yes, Bertie.
We have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have approval of minutes for May 23rd, 2019. We have three public hearings. Item one is amendment to the land use ordinance, section 6.1, urban residential district R1. Item two is adoption of the land use ordinance, section 936, commercial animal husbandry farms and associated definitions to be added to land use ordinance, section 3.2. Item three is amendment to contract the yards, land use tables, and performance standards in the land use section 9314. We then have recommendations to the board of selectmen for all of the amendments to the land use ordinance. There are three separate items that the board will have to vote on. The last item on the agenda, or next to the last item, is fire protection ordinance workshop with your Arundel Fire Chief. And then we have other business, and then we're going to adjourn to home. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Sorry. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? We do need to table the approval of the minutes for May 23rd, 2019. They haven't come out yet. Bertie still has an amendment working on them. Other than that, is there any items that people need to want to add on? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amended agenda?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Public hearing. Item one, amendments to land use ordinance, 6.1, urban residential district R1. This item was carried over from public hearings two weeks ago. And I hope all of you have it, it was exhibit A that was up in the back. We have taken some items out of the permitted uses, and we have added in other types into both permitted uses and to conditional uses. And I will open the public hearing at 7:05 for comments from the public.
Do you have an example, Mr. Chairman, of the, I don't know, the rest of type 1 and type 2 contents? Was it? Without no...
You're talking home occupations?
Yes.
An example of a type 1 home occupation. You could be a beekeeper.
Right.
And you don't have people coming to see you, you don't have employees, you have your, the honey that you collect, and you go about doing your own, whatever it is. Or you could be somebody who sits at home and makes quilts, doesn't have people coming to see them. It's basically, you're not going to be generating any additional traffic, and you're not going to have employees in the type 1. The type 2 could have an employee. Was it 1 and 2, Larry? Do you remember?
I believe it was up to 2.
Could have up to 2 employees, but again, would not be generating a significant increase to any traffic that was in the neighborhood. Any other discussion on this section? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:07. And we will move on to item 2, adoption of the land use ordinance, section 936, commercial animal husbandry farms and associated definitions to be added to the land use ordinance, section 3.2. And I'll open this at 7:08.
Wayne Monroe, Arundel resident, like to address the board on this issue?
Yes, sir.
For purpose of clarity, I have a handout for everyone, Tad, you'll get mine at the end. And I will not abuse your time clock, I will take you through this quick. So I happened to be tooling around the town website, came across the agenda for tonight, and I did a quick review of the proposed setbacks regarding animal husbandry. And I take it that domesticated animals includes cows, and pigs, and porcs, and all that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I moved through the table under two designation criteria, and with some professional judgment, as well as noting of being a resident of Arundel, what would be reasonably scientific and following other state-recognized standards, federal standards? Under minimum setback of animals in grazing area from front property line, would you tell me if a front property line would commonly, in many occasions, be associated with road frontage? Is that correct, Wirthy?
Correct.
In many cases, not all cases, probably, I mean, it's not all cases, but commonly it could be. The proposed setback is five feet, which I think would be very problematic, to be having a potential grazing in animal location adjacent to the town ditches, which are known as, you know, they are temporary watercourses, town ditches. Most town ditches outlet to perennial streams, which there's very specific setback criteria identified by the State of Maine Nutrient Management Rule, USDA standards, and so forth that I did put for you, you don't need to go there, but they're all there in many instances. Your own criteria on page 3, under 5C, no grazing area shall be established within 50 feet of a wetland watercourse or open body of water. Animal grazing, housing, feeding operation, or storage, and so on. Show on its own grave, you have that covered. Watercourse, again, a ditch would be perceived and defined as a temporary watercourse during storm flows. Anything, you know, the other day we had two inches. So if you have your animal activity right up on that front line transition zone on a town ditch, there's a high potential for water quality, nutrients, and phosphorus to get in the ditch, go downstream, outlet into the perennial watercourses in this town. The town has signed on to several water quality management projects. One, Thatch of Brook. Two, Kennybunk River Watershed, all which are state-sponsored and federally sponsored by the DEP and EPA. So I would recommend, at minimum, you possibly consider 25 feet and/or conform to 5C, 50 feet, in order to set a really good reasonable water quality standard. Next, setback of feeding and grazing area from water supply well on any property, 75 feet just defies EPA rule, state standard nutrient management rule. It's right there before you. 100 feet's always the limit. It's up to you what you do, but should you be challenged, 100 feet is the recognized setback. Don't want any well. You would not want a feeding area, which could be a very large concrete pad with scores of animals, within 75 feet of a well. Potential contamination zone. So I suggest that you go to 100 feet. Next, from any water supplier well, again, there's different standards in 75 feet. Private, 100. Public, it's before you. Oftentimes, public water supply, in the documents before you, is 300 feet. From property line, that's another one, minimum, possibly 100 feet. And that gets into the same thing. You could have a manure storage structure. How many of you would want a 50,000 cubic foot manure storage structure, 75 feet outside your bedroom? I think you want to take a closer look at that one. Let's see, there's anything on the back. That's my presentation. I think you want to double check your setbacks. All the documentation is for you. Any questions?
Does anyone else in the public have comments to make? Chip?
At the first public hearing on the subject, the draft language defined commercial animal husbandry as more than 15,000 of net revenue, which was problematic for any number of reasons. Now it has been changed to 15,000 of annual revenue. And I think that if you're talking about gross revenue, just sales, I believe that that is too low a threshold for something considered a commercial farm. I think that it's entirely possible for a hobby farm, a term that the board has discussed in the past, to have 15,000 of revenues, not every year, but in one year, just because sometimes things happen, you might sell more animals in a given year. And I just wanted to state that I think that that 15,000 number is too low, when you're looking at gross revenues. I do want to applaud the change to annual revenue from an undefined and effectively unenforceable number of net revenue. The other comment I wanted to make is that on page 2, 4A2, manure management, and it says, "As mandated by the Maine Department of Agriculture, best management practices." Have you guys had a chance to read the best management practices document? Not you, Tad, the board members. Because Tad, I don't think Tad read the introduction, if he did. The best management practices are guidelines, and explicitly in the introduction, bear with me while I find it. It is a resource for the agricultural compliance program of the Maine Department of Agriculture. And the intent is to, this manual provides a guide, and likewise, it may serve as a guide to anyone else involved in addressing complaints. And I don't remember exactly where it says, but basically, it says that the best management practices are to be used as a resource for the state to promulgate actual regulations. In other words, the best management practices document is not regulations. Specific to manure management, there are specific state regulations. I cited them, I emailed Tad, tech, the links to those exact portions of the state statute, and that is what this document should refer to, not guidelines, but the actual statute.
Which statute does that, Chip?
I don't have the number on it, but it's, 50 animal units...
Right, okay, so I think there's some confusion. Basically, when it was labeled best management practice here in exhibit B, it was meant to be Maine nutrient management rule. Best management practices is a totally separate documentation used under Right to Farm Act in agriculture. Maine nutrient management rule, chapter 580, I guess I have that printed in there, 565, Maine nutrient management rules. Totally separate animal than best management practice guidelines.
And that 565 is what I'm referring to.
Right. It is a lot of interpretation, but all of, this was updated in 2018. I just presented all the updated data, but...
But that, I'm sorry, to the chair...
Yeah, that's not have cross discussion.
Well, touch my one rule and put this...
Does anyone have any other comments to make concerning this particular change?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone have to know the threshold for the nutrient management plan? Is there an animal unit threshold?
I believe there is, but throughout the development of this ordinance, the concept for commercial animal husbandry was that you would be in contact with the Maine Department of Agriculture, and they would be setting those standards, whatever they happen to be. We felt that because of the complex nature of those standards, we've already worked on this for a couple of years, and it becomes much easier to say, and I'm sorry, it really is, it's much easier for us, and you may or may not like that answer, but it's easier for us to say, go to the Maine Department of Agriculture, those guys are supposedly the professionals, and they will be able to answer that question. Chip?
That, the question this gentleman asked is exactly why those change to the ordinance should refer to the Nutrient Management Act and not to the best management practices, because the Nutrient Management Act is very explicit, and it is 50 animal units, to answer the question. Best management practices does not have that threshold.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
If the, if the state mandates that after 50 animal units, you need a nutrient management plan, that's correct?
It seems to be what Chip is...
And that's exactly why you didn't write that in there? Because it's already...
Yes, it's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So if you're a commercial farmer, wouldn't you need to have a nutrient management program through the state?
Yes.
So that would be enough to consider you a commercial farmer?
No, well, your question, unless I miss it completely, your question was if you're a commercial farmer, you have to have a nutrient management plan?
Correct.
Well, yes.
Okay. So isn't that enough to prove that you are a commercial farmer?
Oh, okay. I would tend to say probably...
The question presupposes the answer.
The question does presuppose the answer to it, but, you know...
The reason why I say...
That's the lawyer, the jury. But, yes.
Because the reason why I say that is, the reason why I'm here, the whole idea of anybody having to prove any type of income or percentage of household income to the plan and board in order to justify what they're doing, just does not make any sense to me.
We had those discussions long and hard.
I know, I know you have, but I, and I jumped on board late, and I apologize.
It's quite okay.
I jumped on board late. But, I mean, if you're, if you have to prove that 40% of your income comes from farming, you have to give your tax return to the planning board. And I know you don't want it, and I know you're saying you don't need it, but now it becomes public information. Anybody can come look at that. As soon as you have to give something to the planning board to get approval, it's all for the, anybody in the whole town to see. I can't even fathom how that could even have ended up on there like that. I've looked at a few, you know, whereabouts you would need to prove your income. I looked at other land use ordinances. Doesn't exist. I just, I can't even see how it's, well, I don't know. Maybe it is legal, I don't know, but I'll want to show you my tax return. And you don't need it to prove you're a commercial farmer. There's so many other ways. I believe in my right, commercial farmers? I mean, why is it in there?
Tad, you seem to indicate, I mean, I agree with you, Linda. I mean, it's, it's...
You guys were looking at the floor.
But you needed a threshold of some way to differentiate between a hobby farm and a commercial farm. And so we, we had a long discussion about this, how it was ludicrous to try to affix a dollar amount to designate whether or not you're a commercial farmer.
A hobby farm will have certain, you know, sales taxes, debt numbers, there's a lot of things that you could provide without doing...
I totally agree. So why do we need the number? Do we need the number?
Because you can't come up with anything else.
Uh-huh. But Linda just said one thing.
There's a, I'm sure, and I'm not even a farmer, and I'm sure...
You based it on animal units, you based it on, I mean, the number of animal units was the difference between, animal units is great when we're talking about large livestock, when we talk about chickens and ducks and so forth, animal units are useless, because we have a huge amount of smaller animal units, like chickens and ducks, that are equivalent to one cattle, one steer, and the impact is greater than that one steer. So you're trying to find something besides animal units to make that threshold difference.
So how do other towns deal with it?
They just say animal husbandry is a, they consider it commercial, you know, and if they don't want to include, say, kennels in there, or whatever they say, except, except kennels, but I have yet to find one that defines animal husbandry with any type of financial data.
Yeah. Shouldn't a nutrient management plan be sufficient? Because if you're going to the extent that you're getting a nutrient management plan, then, I mean, you're a farm.
Yes, you're a farmer.
I think the concern was this is in a residential district, that's why this was a little different than it would be in a, than it would be, let's say, in the R4 district.
Right.
This is, this is allowing commercial animal husbandry operations within a designated residential district. The other alternative is create an overlay zone, and say, if you have this much acreage, this many animals, you're, you could be a farm in a residential district, if you need these setbacks and so forth. And the planning board of the complaint committee went over that concept and decided not to go that way, in having an overlay district. Instead, just created two categories. One is hobby farm, a hobby farm person, and the other one was a commercial animal husbandry farm. And the finding what kind of threshold you can have when you've got apples and oranges, like chickens versus, you know, Highland cattle, was the difficult part, and that's where it came down to money.
I remember having this meeting, though, and I remember, like, for example, we are in a residential district. However, our farm will forever be there, so some of it doesn't totally make sense, I think, the way that we're going about it. I feel as though a nutrient management plan, if you're going to that extent and using best practices, that should be sufficient, personally.
Well, if there were those who wanted to do this, who didn't want to get up to the point of a nutrient management plan, which is a 50, 50 animal unit situation, that's where the problem is.
I understand.
Because it's exclusionary otherwise.
Does other... Chip?
I wanted to point out that I understand Mrs. Zook's concerns, and tend to agree with them in general. However, a nutrient management plan is also required if there are two complaints from money property owners. And so you could have three animal units, and be required to develop a nutrient management plan.
You could be, you could be the hobby farmer that we're infamous for discussing, and if you get those complaints...
And I will say, for the umpteenth time, I have been unable to find any resource available other than the Department of Agriculture, federal Department of Agriculture. Mr. Metrell, I believe, is involved in this program, which does nutrient management plans, that research, I said this at the last public hearing, I did research, the town, that's right, the state law provides for licensed nutrient management planner. I have not been able to find one in the state of Maine, other than the Department of Agriculture. The Department of Agriculture will not even consider a grant application for a nutrient management plan if you have fewer than 30 animal units. Therefore, if you have fewer than 30 animal units, you've basically got a dilemma, because you can't, there's no one you can get a nutrient management plan from.
I'd like to make a comment, Wayne Monroe, Arundel resident. There is businesses in the state that are certified to write it, that will negotiate a contract with livestock farms without USDA. Two, the Right to Farm Act complaint that Chip mentioned is very valid. If there's a complaint, you will not win the complaint unless you have a nutrient management plan. Thirdly, USDA will write with financial assistance under the environmental quality incentive program, if you have close to 25 animal units. If you do not have close to 25 animal units, you give me a phone call, I'll put a technician on your farm, or write the plan for free. You can't do too many things. You want one tomorrow? Call me, I'll put someone on it.
Any other comments related to commercial animal husbandry? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:29. And we will proceed on to contract the yards, and I'll open that at 7:29. Amendments to contract the yards, land use tables, and performance standards in the land use ordinance, section 9314. Comments? Yes, ma'am?
Stacy Guile. Just would like to point out that the agenda reads, you know, a list of permanent and conditional use. That contract yard one has a conditional use in section 6.4.2, downtown business district, and the number accordingly, and it's already in there. Item number two is 6.4.2.
I have to confess to being confused, because I don't see what it is that you're talking about.
Can I?
Can I approach the bench and show papers?
So the first guy here, so 6.4.2.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was looking at the bullface.
Sorry, and I speak really heavily, so I just pulled it up on the phone, and so this is 6.4.2. We were, obviously, in the last meeting I was here, I pointed out several places that were, you know, in conflict. I wanted to make sure we got it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who raised your hand?
Let Chip go first.
Okay. Chip?
He may address what I had...
Do we got 40 metrics, hey, Rod? I have just a couple of questions. The first one is just very basic. So we're going to change the wording from blocked to buffered. What is the, what is the definition, I mean, what is buffered versus blocked? And if this has already been presented, I apologize.
buffered is not 100% not visible.
Okay.
Blocked means you can't see it. Buffered, I believe, is...
76 to 100%.
Right. A minimum of 76% visibility, up to and including 100%. So it could conceivably be blocked.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. The other question, I have, it's, I'm not sure if it's a question or opinion, there's existing litigation that the town...
We should all be as aware of at the last meeting.
That the towns involved with regard to pay tech. My question and concern is, should we be changing or, you know, recommending any changes to the land use ordinance with regard to contractor yards until that litigation has gone through its course? For example, what if the court would say, the planning board made an error in some sort of administrative error, and then threw, you know, sent the case back to the board? And let's say in that time that the land use ordinance has changed. Which, which, which ordinance would... Which, which, which ordinance would you refer to, the previous one or the new one? So my question is, I just, I question whether or not it's appropriate this time to be making changes to the land use ordinance when the town's in litigation with regard to that section of the land use ordinance.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
To answer that question, I think we would have to turn on, uh, apply by the rules of what the rules were then, not new.
Well, we don't know that the court would see it that way.
Because that's the guideline.
This issue was.
The judgment was made.
No, no, he, he, I would thought, um, not in your, for this, for any contract.
Is that the issue with the court? Because I thought it was no issue.
It's essential. State bridges, whether or not the planning board did in fact all of the ordinance in terms of notice and so forth.
Okay. And my last comment, suggestion, if, if, hasn't been done already, maybe it's worth going to the town attorney to get an opinion on whether or not we should be making changes, suggestion, but, um.
Are you opening the town up to exposure by putting this on the vote at this point?
That's all. Okay.
Thank you.
Chip?
I had a completely different question. I, I'm, I'm looking at this one page here. I, I don't see the provision for, maybe I'm, I'm just not reading right, for extending the window, uh, for grandfather contractor yards to apply for a partner. Has that been dropped?
No, that was, that was, uh, taken care of at the previous public hearings and, and was approved and sent up to the selectmen.
It's a separate warrant.
Yeah, it's a separate warranty.
Okay. I do, I, may I, may I make an observation, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Oh, at the previous public hearing, it was stated several times that, that there was financial hardship on non-conforming businesses, and something bothered me about that at the time. I couldn't quite put my finger on it. But I would like to point out that when, when a business has financial hardship because of land use ordinances, they have a tendency to approach the town. Town officials, this board, and everybody else they can lay their hands on. And yet, I haven't heard about scores of applicants, well, of people who, who had businesses that would have qualified as, uh, conforming contractor yards or grandfather contractor yards. And I, I just, it seems to me there's a disconnect that if it's such a financial hardship, then why didn't we hear a lot of that all the time? Thank you.
Any other comments on contract the yards? Yes, sir.
Greg Owen. Just wondering why you're getting rid of such a defined block and going to an extremely convoluted, vague sense of what is buffered. That just seems backwards. Buffered is up to interpretation, which any attorney can interpret things any way they want, where your block comments in there are, this is what you need to do. It's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to read the definition from the, the, the definition?
Yes, please.
That might shed a little light. Buffered is defined in the, in the ordinance as the application of plant material, earthwork, fencing structures, or any combination thereof that visually obstructs seventy-six to one hundred percent of land use activity from a specified vantage point on another property. Visual obstruction shall be maintained on a year-round basis. A general buffering shall be applied to separate residential, non-residential uses in all zoning districts. So it's an interpretation of how much, how much is applied is given to the planning board under the landscaping section of the lands.
Right, and it's also up to interpretation, what seventy-six percent?
Well, that would actually be a physical measurement of how much would be visible.
Surprisingly enough, they're, they're able, and I was surprised to hear, that they can actually measure what, what that percentage number is depending on type of material that's used.
Okay, so who, who does that measurement? Is that someone from the town?
Usually, yeah.
So, so it's going to be eating up town resources instead of having a blocked landscape when someone complains? We're going to be eating up time, resources, and time to go out and verify that.
And the town could, and the town planning board would be, um, would be well advised, in fact, in a situation like that, whether it was a serious question to contract or have the, have the applicant contract, the landscape architect, registered landscape architect, to actually provide that information. And I would advise the board for that, in that situation, and a third party review of that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on, yes, ma'am?
Getting back to the, the buffer, Deb Levangi, West Lane. The earth barrier is being used by our neighbor. Not so much as buffer. He'll call it a buffer, but it's actually piles of dirt that he will be eventually exporting to his business around town. But, but he can call it a buffer.
The planning board in a situation like this, as they've applied it in other situations, it would be a permanent, permanent fixture. That would be a permanent mounting, let's say, in a situation as you're talking about, would be mounted, stabilized. It has grass on it or landscaping materials stabilized with other plant material on it, such that it's a permanent fixture and not, will not change.
So what do we do if that is what's happening?
Well, I, I can't speak about what, what your situation is there, but the planning board has not proved anything that's gone out in your, in that area there. But if that person were to be able to, were required to buffer, that would not be material that was being used just for storage purposes. That would have to be a buffer that, a permanent buffer, as I said. That would have to be something that's not, will not, not, uh, excavation material that's, that's being used in other jobs. Can you, can you contact the code enforcement officer?
In this, it would, you would need to contact.
Twenty times.
So, so would that, so would that still be blocked for them at this point and not buffered?
No, that's not buffered. That's not. Because it's, because it's, 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 it's material. It's like saying that, okay, I have, I have to provide.
No, you should, should, it'd be required for it to be blocked currently. There's no business use out there at this time. I understand that there is a business out there, but that business has not come before the planning board. And there isn't an ordinance, uh, there's a warrant on the town meeting. That would.
Well, it's not permitted use in that zone right now, nor will it be.
Right.
But they're allowed to operate as is at this point, destroying our roads, leaving plows in front of our houses.
That is a question for the code enforcement officer. The, the planning board does not do the enforcement. That is something that the code's enforcement officer has to deal with.
And, and should it take six years?
That is a question that the board of selectmen have to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am.
Yes, please.
To the chair, if there are issues that you've gone through the code enforcement officer and nothing is happening, please contact the town manager so that he can put it on the agenda for the selectmen to discuss.
He's been contacted. Maybe ten times.
I am the chair of the pla, of the selectmen, so I will take that up if I know what's going on.
Will you take your advice?
Chip?
I have a question, interpretation. The current ordinance and the proposed changes, wouldn't materials used in the course of business be part of what needs to be currently blocked and in the future buffered so that your neighbor can't have a three-story pile of gravel, or if they do, they have to have a three-story fence? To, i- i- am I, am I correct?
You are correct. It, it's not just a matter of buffering from the neighbors. Whatever materials would be in that contracted yard must also, they're part of the buffer. They, you can't see them. You can't see them. You can't see the equipment. It's all supposed to be blocked up, or at least buffered to seventy-six percent.
I'm sorry, is that the, that's the current?
That is the current. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that would be something we would file with the code enforcement officer if they had a concern?
Yes. Because it's, it's not something that the planning board can, we can't do anything about.
We don't have the authority to do it.
Thank you. We might like to have the authority, but we don't.
No, I just want to make sure it was clear and understanding. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on contract the yards? Hearing none at seven forty-five. I will close contract the yards. This concludes the public hearings. The board now has, we now have to make decisions in terms of what we do with, with these. Do we send them to the selectmen? Or not? That's basically the discussion that we have to have. So on the very first one, amendments to the land use ordinance, urban residential district are one. We need a motion, one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, then there's a recommendation.
Yes, okay.
Considering that, um, six one contains, uh, one of the uses that is under question today, and I suggest that the board will go to change the order of consideration here and consider, uh, commercial, uh, animal husbandry farms first before considering six one.
Is that okay with everybody? Will we just move the order down? Yeah. Okay.
I'm in.
So we'll, we'll, the first one then will be, uh, item two on the agenda. Adoption of the land use ordinance section nine three six, commercial animal husbandry farms, and associated definitions to be added to land use ordinance section three two. Gentlemen in the meeting, we'll take your pleasure. Need a motion, one way or the other.
I make the motion that we accept it at present.
The recommendation needs to be to forward this to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant.
Select it to the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
For the sake of discussion, I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to, to send item two, the adoption of land use ordinance nine three six, commercial animal husbandry, to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant. Discussion?
Yeah. We've worked on this for multi-years. It may not be perfect. There may be new, new other a, afterfacts. We have tried to follow it in guidelines with the, uh, Department of Agriculture already in the state of Maine. They've more or less given their approval on it. I think that we should turn on it, uh, forward it so that we have something in place and not waste another year.
Just, just so that everybody in the public knows, this was submitted to the Department of,
The Commissioner.
To the Commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, because they required this, this submission to them before it goes to town meeting, and they contacted the town planner and said they were fine with it later.
Technically, technically, they said it does not violate that law.
Right. It was totally different than what I said, but I liked my description of it. But they, they did, they were, they were okay with it. They had no problems. And I, I tend to agree with Marty. We've been working on this for at least three years, if not longer. And I, we can always tweak it and fine tune it. We're never going to get it perfect. We're going to have to make some changes at some point, but I just assumed get a good head start on everything. Remembering that if, if this goes down, then we're back to the five thousand pounds of, of animal units. And that's the only thing that will be on the, on, on land use ordinance.
Are we allowed to comment at this point?
No, no, ma'am. This is, um, planning board only. Okay, so we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to send this to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Five, five one. Thank you very much. Back to item one. Amendments to the land use ordinance section six point one, urban residential design are one. We need a motion to, one way or the other, to either send it to the selectmen for inclusion on the warrant or to not send it.
Move to send, or to the selectmen. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to send land use ordinance six one to the selectmen. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Item three, amendments to contract the yards, land use tables and performance standards in the land use section nine three fourteen. Again, need a motion.
I make the motion, we send this amendment to the board of selectmen? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to forward this to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Five one, motion carries. Next up is the chief, and he just came in. Good timing, brother. The chief is here to make a presentation to the planning board. Uh, we're having a fire ordinance workshop. That being said, I'm going to let the, the chief take over.
Uh, to the chair, one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we have the chief. If any of the public who is here tonight would like for future changes, if things come about, can they please come forward sooner than last minute, Charlie?
Did y'all hear that?
No.
Marty, Marty is suggesting that if, if this passes town meeting and you have things that you would like to see changed or tweaked to make it better, get them to the planning board sooner rather than later. Because the sooner we get them, the sooner we can work everything up, we can have public hearings, we can, we can get everything tweaked the way that it, that you would like to have it.
So the means by which to get them in front of you is during that public comment section at the beginning of your meetings, how?
If, if it's not on the ordinance, yes, ma'am.
So if you, if you had concerns, that's, that's the way to, to, to address Marty's concerns and get them?
You can do that, or you can send them to the town planner, and he will bring them to the board, and we will work on tweaking them at that point. Make sure you've signed up to get emails so that you'll be notified of what's going on. Don't forget to check the town website for the agenda of the planning board. And I believe the chairman of the selectmen has his hand up. Either that or his head's sore and he's scratching his head.
And make a suggestion to the planning board.
Absolutely.
That we do not have public hearings a month before the meeting, because this is what happens when we have public hearings a month before.
And I would, I would inform the chairman that we have already taken steps to fix this. From now on, when we get through something on the, in the past, we, we had been told not to have them for financial purposes, because it costs about four hundred dollars to have a public hearing between the advertising and everything else. We, I have talked with the town manager, and as soon as we finish anything related to the land use ordinance, we're having a public hearing. And if we end up having public hearings every other week for the next year, so be it. We're not going to wait. I, I agree with him, waiting until the very end. We're not going to wait, I, I agree with him, waiting until the very end just doesn't do it.
But that also, I think that addresses, Marty, it raises awareness of what's going on, and people will maybe pay attention and then get, and then get involved. I think Marty's absolutely right.
Yeah.
Helps sustain momentum.
You lose the momentum.
Oh yeah.
The other way around, absolutely.
We've been meeting almost every week.
When we were working on the animal husbandry, we met every week for the better part of six months. Because we have, every other week, we have a regular planning board meeting. And so on the opposite weeks, we were meeting with the comp plan and having meetings to, to work all of this information up. And I, and I applaud the comp plan for having put up with this. Because they did, they did a good job of showing, like, those that showed up. Okay. Mr. Fire Chief, take it away.
Did you guys have copies of the, the? So what we're looking to do is adopt, well, we're putting together a fire protection and safety ordinance for the town. We, this was proposed, the board of selectmen, a few months ago, was turned down. It was because it's in conflict with the land use ordinance. A lot of the same articles are in there, so it's been reworded and it's highlighted on one of the pages. You'll see that some of the stuff is, reflects towards the land use ordinance. I was asked by the board of selectmen to come and work with you guys to try to come to a means so we can agree to an article. Or I can adopt NFPA articles and be in compliance with NFPA, and also be, be able to work with the land use ordinance because of a lot of the similarities. The board of selectmen feels like if there's a change in the land use ordinance, we'll have to make the, the changes to the fire protection and safety ordinance as well. So, what do you guys think? Have you guys had time to review it?
No.
Not completely done. If I understand this correctly, though, this is going to be a standalone ordinance?
I think we suggested that you pull the stuff out of, of your ordinance and make it a standalone ordinance, and, and you, and you point to it. Kind of what we, we thought, but we felt you ought to come to the planning board first and kind of talk it over with you guys.
There are just some things that I, you guys have in the land use ordinance that I agree is very precious to you guys, but it's also precious to me as well. I think it's, it almost belongs in both ordinances, unfortunately. So I, I just think if we're trying to make changes, we have to make the changes in both.
Could you give us an example?
It's just, I think there was, like, Knox boxes. You guys have that in your land use ordinance?
All commercial structures.
Yep. It's called a, we worded it as a rapid entry secured Knox box program. The parking, roadways, fire access, FDIC locations of the fire department connection locations. That's all fire protection ordinance, that's all fire protection and life safety stuff. That's stuff that I got to put in my, if I don't put that, then I might as well not have a fire, a fire protection ordinance. But it's also in the life, in your land use ordinance, so.
Especially things like fire lanes.
Yeah, fire lanes.
Which are critical, especially in actual situations, to ensure that fire engines have access and are not blocked off from the entrance to these buildings.
So there's a little bit of a conflict there. But we are looking to adopt, like, NFPA one oh one and NFPA one, and any associating NFPA laws that abide with NFPA one and one oh one.
What's that?
Yes, chief, I was going to ask if you could explain to the board and to the citizens what NFPA one oh one is.
So like NFPA one oh one is a, they're basically rules and regulations placed by the National Fire Protection Agency. And they're the ones who tell you that in schools, you've got to have fire retardant curtains. That in schools, the exit has to be so wide for so many students. Or you've got to be handicap accessible, and the ramp has to be so many inches per foot for wheelchair. NFPA regulates everything. Where exit signs have to go, where emergency lights have to go, you're surrounded by NFPA laws. NFPA fire codes as well determines where the sprinkler heads go, where the fire protection connection goes. Everything is, you know, what kind of materials they can use in schools and all, and whatnot. It goes along with homes, commercial structures, everything you see today. Carpenters, plumbers, electricians have to abide a lot of these rules and laws. Otherwise, now it'd be like the wild wild west, everyone would do what they want. Buildings would fall on people or burn to a crisp and kill people. This is all about saving people's lives. So, all the towns surrounding us have adopted these codes except for one. So, and there's no way to enforce it. I got no way to enforce it unless it's adopted by the town.
Chief, if I may, also, is not NFPA one oh one also required? Isn't that state law?
It is state law, it's, 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 it is state law. We're technically not an NFPA state, they, they say we're a state, but the laws through NFPA, that's what they use. They also use international fire code and the NFPA. And the state has adopted and goes by NFPA laws. So they might call, they might call us, not call us as an NFPA state, but we do follow NFPA laws and regulations.
So I'm sorry, you mentioned that the towns surrounding us all have adopted these.
Yeah, a lot of towns like, kind of, were adopted NFPA laws in nineteen eighty-nine. It's, it's, they've been around forever. It's nothing new.
Through the chair.
Yes, chief.
I have a procedural question about this. If, if these new regulations are not incorporated into the land use ordinance, and they are in the standalone ordinance, what entity is responsible for drafting and promulgating that ordinance and bringing, I assume, bringing it to town meeting for the?
I believe that would be the selectmen, but it's my, it's my understanding that if we're going to merge parts of this into the land use ordinance, then the planning board and the selectmen together would, would have to have input into both sides of it. So we'd have to be looking at what the chief wants us to do within the land use ordinance. The standalone ordinance itself would be, would be a standalone ordinance. To me, the big issue would be, would become what happens at town meeting if one side fails and the other side doesn't.
It's like your street design, right? So you, you took stuff out of your, you wanted to put it all into the street design.
Yep.
So I can kind of see this as kind of the same thing.
And I agree, I think that's, that's, that's a good illustration of what it would look like.
But, forgive me, but street designing, there was a committee, an ad hoc committee, for the major revisions to the street road ordinance. However, that still came through the planning board, if I'm not mistaken.
You are mistaken. The only aspect that the planning board had on that was to have a public hearing.
Okay, so the planning board had the public hearing, and it was up to the selectmen to?
That is correct.
To vote on it, okay. So, and, and that is how the proposed new fire safety ordinance would be?
Well, it hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been determined. We, we need to, to sit with the chief, we need to go through and say what, within the ordinance, and, and just reading through here, I can see a couple of things where there was a discussion. There's a discussion about sprinkling, for example. And, and what happens if you sprinkle or if you don't sprinkle? And the, the section I saw said that if you sprinkle, then you're not subject to this other section.
That's a land, a land use ordinance.
That's correct, that's the land use ordinance. And that's information that, that the planning board would be, would be working on. The, the outside aspect of it, and I, I believe that Ted already mentioned, when it comes to businesses, the land use ordinance requires Knox boxes. Although you call them something different now.
Well, it's a generic name, because now other companies are making these boxes, so Knox is a trademark.
So, but we require Knox boxes so that the fire department could get in to the building if there was an emergency, if it was on fire inside.
And the fire departments, the only ones that use them.
Yeah.
So.
Now, I remember.
You see my dilemma putting it in the fire protection ordinance.
I remember when we were on the fire department, and we showed up at a building that did not have one, and we had to breach the door. And it was because their, their sprinkler system had malfunctioned and sprayed carbon dioxide or monoxide or whatever that stuff is, all over the place, and we couldn't see anything. We thought we saw smoke. Until we breached the doors, they were not having. But there are, there are valid reasons to have it in the land use ordinance, and there are valid reasons to have it as a standalone, because not everything that is in there. Land safe NFPA one oh one, for example, is something that the selectmen would need to recommend an adoption for. That's not necessarily something that would fall under the purview of this planning board.
Yes, well, if I may, you know, I think, you know, our comment is that we ought to take what the chief has and look at it, because what we don't want is, if you've got something in his document, and you've got something in the land use ordinance, and, you know, you make a change, but we don't want it more than one place. So we got to look to see, you know, what's, what's together and pull that out of your ordinance and put it into that document, you know, like it's.
Oh, absolutely, I think, I think if we can, if we can sit with the chief and go over all of this and say, okay, and, and have, have a workshop and sit down and say, let's go through all of this, line by line, and say, okay, what do we need to do within the land use ordinance to bring this about?
And I think that Delma can throw in, I think that's kind of what we talked about, right, Delma and Mr. Dino?
Yes, yes.
You know, and kind of mentioned it that way. And if, if we do, you know, we could do a workshop similar to what we did with, with the street design. The street design was initiated by the selectmen, and then it, you know, it asked the planning board to, to be part of it, but we could do the same thing with this also.
Well, I'd, I'd like to sit, I'll, I'll be completely honest, I am totally biased. If the chief thinks that this is something that should happen, I'm right behind him.
Yeah.
I, I spent eight years as a fireman here in town, I'm right behind the chief. What's he want to do?
I think we're on the same lines, it's just that now when you get into conflicting, we went into all this stuff that we're going through here now.
And we could, and we could work it out.
Well, I was just going to say, why can't you make the documents parallel with one another? So that the standalone ordinance and the land use ordinance, basically, one restates the information that's in the other, so that there's no confusion.
That, that's what the chief was talking about.
So you could just kind of wholesale go through and adopt it and take out.
Because, because part of it's a standalone and part of it's a land use ordinance, we have to merge what the chief wants into the land use ordinance. So if we could sit with him, we can go through and pull out all of the stuff that's in there.
Take your language.
And, and put his language in there.
And enforcement's a great issue.
Yeah, enforcement's a great one. In this case, if it's in the land use ordinance, it's a situation where those enforcement is involved. If it's a standalone fire ordinance, the chief is going to enforce this ordinance.
Well, I mean, you know, you, whenever you have something that comes to the board and has to do with the fire, what do you do with it?
We ask the chief to, and he goes.
So he's going to go over and he's going to look at it, and, and if you take all of that stuff out of your land use ordinance, and, and you, in the land use ordinance, you refer to that document, and there you go, everything is right there. And if there's a change that gets made at the state level, and we miss it or whatever, you don't have to, the board doesn't have to worry about it because it's in his document.
And also he was putting some stuff in subdivision law into this as well. So it's not just the land use ordinance, it's going to be subdivision.
Yeah. And that's what happens sometimes, right? If you get stuff in, in the, in your subdivision and then your land use, and then now you've got this document, now you get three different things in it.
And that's, that's, we don't, we don't want to make it more complicated.
And, but who, couldn't he incorporate a lot of that into his document? So that, for the subdivisions and things like that, as part of, so it becomes one living document?
Yeah, from a ten thousand foot level, I would say yes. You've got to look at it and then make that determination, but I would say absolutely. You would point to his document in your subdivision, in your land use ordinance, you would point to his document.
You have one authority.
But we still, we still need to go through and look at the land use ordinance and say.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
And that's the things that we do are not going to be covered by one law. For instance, site layout, obstructions to laddering, for instance, aren't in one oh one, but they could be in the land use ordinance. So if he's got a problem with the way that, that somebody's sighted the building or the landscape and the instructions they put in, makes it impossible to ram a ladder a building, that should be something that, and one, one oh one doesn't cover that, then it's got to have power to be, to do something in the land use ordinance. Because laddering is key for a safety, firefighter safety.
I think the easy, at, at this point, I think it's simply a matter of finding out when we can get together as a planning board with the chief and start going through the ordinance.
If staff can sort out doing that with people.
We would.
Staff doesn't have enough to do?
We're back to finding that red on her.
I think it would be, I think, I think it would be good just to get together with the chief and work it, work through it, because it's going to make all of us more familiar with where all of these little things. These are the great landmines that, that our friend used to have.
Balkum would say.
Balkum would say landmines.
But remember, it's your ordinance, not his ordinance.
That's right.
You guys need to look at it too.
I think our going through it with the chief would help expose some of those landmines. We'd become more familiar with, with where they are.
Yep.
And, and the resolution on how to fix them. So I think, yeah, I don't know what your schedule looks like. For the most part, we're looking at Thursdays.
I do nothing on Thursday.
Yeah. Are you married?
I don't have any time to.
No.
Well, that's, that was why I had to ask.
That's a variable question, it really depends.
But I think you get time that, you know, Ted knows where everything is, and he can start, you know, identifying in the ordinance where it is, and then these two can get together and, and then, you know, present something to you guys.
We're talking about two, two, two more conflicts.
Yep.
You know, within the ordinance, and it seems to me that going about one review, identifying both these issues and the conflict issues that we can clean out to be efficient.
It's just, it's going to take some time. And that's.
Very busy, which means more meetings.
And that's, that's.
More meetings.
Or maybe a designated subcommittee of some kind.
Well, I think, I think the question at that point would be, we have a subcommittee of planning board and board of selectmen and the fire chief to get together.
Well, I mean, you know, I certainly don't have an issue with meetings, we've got enough of them, but, you know, initially, this is, this is, this is not a, a selectmen's ordinance.
Is there any reason we couldn't draft, take advantage of volunteers outside of those three bodies?
Nope.
To work on those.
Absolutely.
No reason at all, reason at all.
That's awesome, we could do that.
That would be an issue I, I don't know who would put out that call for volunteers, because we just asked. The town manager must have a list, something.
Well, you know, any, but guys like Dave Lane might be interested in doing something like that, or who knows? You know, I don't know. But.
Chief could recommend that.
That's what exactly, the chief, you know, Reynolds wouldn't know who, you know, put the word out and see if anybody would be interested in some sort of committee like that.
Actually, Dave just made a comment to us that he would like to step up his involvement, so what a good way to kickstart.
Yep. Yeah, would be. So how would we go about that, Mr. Chairman?
I think you just kicked it over the hill.
It's not our ordinance.
Then I will contact the town manager and ask him to put together a couple of people that we can put on there, and if you've got a couple of people that we can put on there, then we'll get something going, so that you can review all of this information.
Yep.
That will work quite well, thank you. And then once you get something done, just bring it back to us, and then we'll have more meetings to sit down and make sure we understand it and redline all of the ordinance and put it together for inclusion on a law at the town meeting at some point. But again, that's gonna be one of, then that's gonna be one of those things that as soon as we get it done, we're gonna hold public hearing.
The selectmen don't have a problem with that, the selectmen don't like these last minute, we've had discussions about this.
We don't like them, but we had been told, off until a couple of years ago, you know, they all take place at one point.
Cause it's too much headaches for you guys and not everybody.
Dan, how many times have you were sitting on this board, every year, last minute, one thing or another?
Yeah, and I would bitch about it all the time.
I know, but I can say it, so this isn't just.
No, I know, but I have to try to make it better.
Yep. Not a problem. Thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any other business? I don't.
The only other thing I have to do is do my agenda for 16, and also I have a public hearing, so I have advertised that public hearing.
We have a public hearing next week too.
Thanks for the.
For some reason, I thought it was.
No, not the 16th, it's the 13th.
It's 13th and.
Yeah, we have 13th and, and also.
We just did motor that. Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry. No, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, not public hearings, I'm thinking sidewalks. Don't we have?
A.
It was, it's, we have, we're meeting with the selectmen on the 16th next Thursday, and we have A and B for that.
Okay, that's what I thought, I thought we had one before that meeting. Okay. And I think there's, there might be one on the 13th, I'm not sure.
Now, there's, on a public hearing, don't we have the one about the dog?
That's a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We have two public hearings.
Now, I'm just checking off the sidewalks, because we've got one next week with A and B.
Yeah.
And I couldn't, for some reason, I was thinking we had another one on the 13th, I don't remember who it is, not at this point.
Oh, it's the one that's off Enterprise Drive, is it?
Oh, that's right, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Which one?
That's a sidewalk.
You know I'm not here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which one is that one?
The one up on Enterprise Drive?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And that's on the 13th. Okay. Okay, was it Donna? Was you were there?
All right. If you would indulge me for a minute, I'd like to discuss something with you.
Okay.
I watched the ending of the meeting that I left last week before the ending, I saw the video.
Okay.
And I was rather disappointed in a proposal that I had made, that you are aware of and that the town manager was aware of, was so misunderstood based upon the discussion that I saw. So I think what I'd like to do is clarify the misunderstanding. This began after the last public, yes, the last public hearing. I had a thought, I went to the town manager and discussed with him what you see at the top of this page, and that is exactly what I handed him as a document. After I spoke with him, and he rather well received this, he apparently spoke to Rich, Rich called me, he and I batted it around a little bit, I made just a couple of adjustments, and that's what you see as the second version, the label draft and discussed with Rich. What I don't think was clear to you was the intention of this, and the intention was very simple. The planning board has a ton of stuff to do. And as a result of the joint meetings we had with the comp plan, I thought they worked rather well, we got a lot done in a short, relatively short period of time. Obviously, some of it still needs tweaking, but nonetheless, I thought that was a good approach to some of the questions. The intent of this as a separate committee was to relieve some of the pressure that the planning board feels as you accomplish tasks apart from reviewing applications. If you look at the composition of the committee, as I proposed it, two planning board members, two comp plan members, so sort of an extension of the joint meetings we were having, two businessmen, two residents, a selectman, and initially I sent the town planner. Rich indicated to me that the town planner really doesn't need to come to another bunch of meetings, so I amended that and put him down as consultant. It was never my intention to cut the planning board out of any decision-making, because these are your decisions to make. The intent was to give you an opportunity to have a couple of you tied up with this extra stuff, get some groundwork laid, and then as you look under purpose, bring everything back to the planning board for their review. So it wasn't a matter of pulling away any of your responsibilities, just taking away some of the pressure. What disturbed me a little bit about some of the discussion was it seemed as though some of you thought I have an agenda. And you're right, I do.
Actually.
But I don't know that it's the agenda that you might think.
Actually, what I recall was you actually being identified as a very good prospect to be involved in the kind of review process that would identify conflicts within the ordinance.
I did hear that said as well, and I appreciated that. But I want to go back to the idea of the agenda, because there were some other things that were mentioned at the same time with regards to things becoming political. Over the course of the last four decades, I have been on eight different committees that I can account for, some of them more than once. The reason I keep coming back for punishment is because it's never been political in this town. I've worked with a lot of different people as a result of a lot of, you know, being on so many different committees. It has always been a situation of everybody brings their thoughts to the table, we have the usual arguments, which all of you witnessed during the joint committees, we go back and forth, does this work, does that work? I hate that idea, that's a good one, and it's always been a friendly process. And I've always been happy with the fact that at the end of the process, we came out with something that is sometimes only good, other times it's excellent, but always for the best interests of the town. I have yet to serve on a committee with anyone who is there for their own self-interest. Do we all have self-interest? Yes. Do we all have our own backgrounds and expertises? Do we bring those things to the committee meeting? Yes. Does it influence in a negative way the outcome? Never once have I seen that. Tom Dowdell and I have had many spirited discussions about pigs, all right, to the point where it's a running joke. Rich and I are terrifically opposed on a lot of topics, but it's not personal and it's not political. My agenda, and the reason why I would suggest this kind of committee, and by the way, I don't need to be on it, I don't care if it happens, it's a proposal. My agenda is what we put before the public, any committee, I'm not directing this at the planning board, any committee should always be as accurate as possible, free of errors, because what goes to the public is what represents the people who produced it. A comment that Jens made at that meeting that night was about being a lightning rod for discontent, and I thought that was a really good statement, because that's what you have become at times. Because the public sees something they don't like, or something that is in error, and they immediately say, it's your fault. That shouldn't be happening to volunteers. Volunteers ought to be respected because of all the time that gets put in, and I say that as a volunteer, and I say that because I appreciate every other volunteer on every committee in this town. And that includes selectmen, they're elected, but they're still volunteers. We're all in this together. The other piece of my agenda is that tasks should not take years to accomplish. Marty made reference to this before with regards to the animal husbandry. The other issue that I brought up not too long ago was the idea of the district booklets, to split the ordinance up so that focus is on the place that the person wants something done, all right? That idea has been running around for, I'll say, minimum five years. It's not been accomplished yet. This committee could potentially be working on that. When they're done, you bring it back to the planning board, the planning board reviews I would like to see the planning board achieve far more respect from the people in this town and far more appreciation, because you do work hard. You cover a lot of territory and you have a lot of expertise, which is very unappreciated. The one board in this town that I would refuse to serve on is that one, because I would not want the responsibility that you have, despite all the other things I've done. So I hope in the course of my rambling with this, you now understand why I suggested that committee. I have no vested interest in that committee, whether it exists or it doesn't. I have no agenda, political or otherwise. I intend to continue to volunteer to do things for this town, and I hope you guys do too as well. One more thing I'll bring up, it is sort of a pet peeve of mine. Volunteers need to be appreciated, but they also have to accept the responsibility for the fact that they volunteered. As a committee chairman for many of the committees that I've functioned on, the biggest problem on a committee is having somebody who does not regularly attend meetings. And that's not to say that you can't miss one here and there, because life gets in the way, family comes first. But the people who show up occasionally slow the process down, you have to back up and get them caught up to speed. And that's another commitment that the volunteer makes. And when we had our joint meeting, most of you were there most of the time, same thing for some of the comp plan members, they put in that extra time to make that happen. That's another important piece of this. Thank you for your time.
This sounds to me like a good idea, but you think nine, the number, might be a little bit cumbersome?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason for the nine was, we're looking for as broad a spectrum as possible.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Seven is a better number, five might be workable, but I wanted to avoid the, well, you're not including this group in the suggestion. Ultimately, this is going to be a selectmen's decision if they want to appoint an ad hoc committee.
Donna.
Yes, sir.
Actually, the nine is good, because guess what? Like you said, those who don't show up, at least you know you're gonna have some people there.
Well, I've worked with committees with nine, it's doable.
Okay, you're.
But nine can be cumbersome, yes.
And we've talked about this, the only problem I have with any of this is to develop new ordinances as needed. I think that's a planning board function.
And it's intended to be. That represents what we did as a joint committee, we developed ordinances, and what happened? It comes back to the planning board, you do the final say, you have your public hearing, you send it to the selectmen. And that sentence doesn't change any of that process, that's why that's in there.
But when I say I think that the development of the ordinances is a planning board function, we would then do something similar to what we did where we got together with the comp plan and we hashed out that ordinance, it would not be something that was taking place by another group of people. That's all.
I agree with you, but that was not the intent of this.
Right, but it's just the way it looks, and perception is reality.
Which is why it needed explanation.
Yep.
Which is part of the reason why I'm here.
And you're right, the summary booklets would be great, which is if we can get them together, because it's simply a matter, right now, I'll be right with you, right now, the ordinance is large and complex and a couple of hundred pages, and if we could pull a booklet out the size of one of these little books that grade school kids read, and everything you needed to know about whatever district you were looking at was in there, it would save the taxpayer or the applicant a great deal of frustration with having to bounce around to different sections. They could look at it and say, here's what I need to know. Now, they're still gonna have to deal with the fire ordinance or anything else, but from a land use ordinance point of view, there's everything you need to know, including a checklist, similar to what we have right now, you know, can I have this waived or do I have no choice? That would be wonderful, and it's up to the selectmen and hopefully they will do something with it.
I'm not sure why it's up to the selectmen, but.
Because it's an ad hoc committee that you would be.
Oh, so that's, but two things, first I want to go back to the nine member. Personally, if we can get nine members, I would say go for it. We ran into this when we talked about the municipal building committee. We put feelers out, we had a bunch of people, and initially I was like, this is too much, you know, I was against having whoever wanted to be in it. And all the members of the board said, you know what, let's take whoever wants to volunteer, because it's hard to get volunteers in this town. And it worked out to be one of the best committees I've ever been on, right? So if we can get nine, to me, we ought to be able to take what we can. All it takes is a chairman to be able to make sure, and, you know, a strong chairman to make sure and focus all of that, so I would discourage from going less than that. The other thing about the booklet, back when I was on the planning board, we talked about that.
We did.
Right? So granted, you know, you guys have a lot of work to do, and there was a suggestion made at one of the public hearings about maybe getting a third party to go in and start to do some of that. Keith has reached out, we will have that discussion, and we may have that discussion with you folks on the sixth, but, you know, we definitely need to get something going on this, and then I agree 100%, you know, that when somebody, an applicant comes to Ted and says, I want to put up, you know, a development in the R2 district, whatever, pull the booklet, here you go, and everything is there. And you need to meet all of those, and they don't come back and say, oh, yeah, wait a minute, yeah, we found it over here, you gotta go, there shouldn't be none of that, right? Everything is there, the applicant comes, and if he doesn't have everything, then it's not complete. If he has everything, it's complete and you move on. I know it's not easier said than done, but that's certainly to Donna's point, that's certainly something that maybe that committee can work, or a third party or whatever.
As you know, it's very, if you're doing something and you have questions, come and ask the planning board, but don't come and ask us, and then a month later, say, well, I have all of these other questions. The problem is that they don't know what they need to know to do it, so if it were in a booklet someplace, they'd have all of the information and they could go through the applicant.
I think it would be a lot easier for the applicant, and it certainly would be a lot easier for you folks. Having sat on that floor for nine years, I know.
Be a lot less frustrated. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna.
Must be.
You never show up. Unless I got something to say. And so, talking about this last minute thing and me getting involved in the animal husbandry, I mean, I wasn't following it, I don't have a farm, you know, why would I follow it? Public meeting, I'm away on business, a week later, I decide to watch the video, and then that's how I learned about this, right? So because it's last minute, do I not say stuff? Absolutely not, I'm gonna give my peace of mind about how I feel about it and whether it's, I was involved in it. I'm going to give my peace of mind about how I feel about it, and whether I was involved in it or not. And again, even though you've been working on it for three years, it's still not right. So, I apologize for being late in the game, but I'm still going to speak.
That's okay, as long as you realize that if we can get it enacted, we can then tweak it and make it what it needs to be.
Yeah, but.
I'm just.
No, I'm still, get it right, get it right, and then, but anyways, I want to get back to how I am somewhat involved, but not really involved. I watch the videos, okay? So, and I know this is not your fault, and I brought it up to the selectmen. This is the worst setup imaginable. There's no excuse for us not having proper equipment, there's no excuse for us not having microphones. You can't hear a thing. You know, you sit there, I had it pranked all the way up, and I'm listening to it in the car like a podcast, and I find myself like shutting my eyes, trying to like hear, it's terrible. So, anyway, that being said, you know, I listen to the selectmen's meetings too. Don't really have too much of a problem, everybody speaks pretty clearly. Everybody on the board, I can hear you all pretty clearly, except for one, and Tad, we've had this conversation. You mumble.
And he did it tonight.
I mean, just if you can try to be either that or moved closer to the camera, or something. And then, when you have like the low speaker in the audience, you know, like Kevin Allen during that meeting, I mean, the guy's so soft-spoken, you can't, you know, it's like, maybe ask him to stand up and walk a little bit closer to the microphone. I mean, that's why, you know, every other planning's board or selectmen's board, I mean, they have microphones, they have, it's, there's no reason for us to have this type of antiquated system at this stage of the game.
The other problem is, the other problem is, we also have to convert this data.
I know.
To an MP3, to a WNV, which is the worst possible audio you can possibly get.
Exactly, and then I, and then I got, so I got to wait a week to find out what's going on.
That's right.
So, another reason why I'm letting you know so late, because I didn't watch the video until a week later.
No. What you're saying that is, when we turn, I had this school bill, okay? We sent to the RSU, they were going to have cable TV in here and everything else.
Uh huh, yeah, I know.
And that was all part of the agreement.
Yeah.
And guess what?
No.
No.
No, no, that's, all they need is a microphone and a camera. That's it. We, look.
Nope.
You going to crack me?
So toothy. Number one is, we really haven't looked at doing anything with the camera here, because the municipal building will definitely have much better stuff. That's our plan.
But we were told that.
This is my dime right now. Thank you.
Sorry.
This building is wired to be hooked up to TV. The problem is, we don't own the equipment. The RSU owns the equipment, and I asked Keith a couple of weeks ago to look into that, just like if there was something we could do in the interim. But the RSU has had meetings from here that have been live broadcast. So, it is, it can be done. But the RSU has all that equipment, and that's very expensive equipment.
It's getting cheaper, it's not, you can't get.
We're not going to buy it now, we're going to have to redo something all over again in a year's time.
You'll never get that building done in a year, and you can take it with you. This building is already set and ready to go.
But we're going to have a committee that is going to work the audiovisual part of the new building. So, it may not be the same stuff. It may be something completely different, we don't know yet, we're not sure on that yet.
So, you would never have any meetings here after that?
That's the plan. The plan is for the municipal building to have all of our town functions. That's why we're calling it a municipal building.
Well, the thought of going for another two years, the way that things are set up.
I looked at having microphones a while back, I looked at adding a microphone to that.
Yeah.
We can look at it again just to see what we can do.
Blake Warren, from Video Creations, the selectman over in Kalam, said he would help us get a set. He also believes that we have cable space as well that we've paid for.
We do.
We do. Not that I care about the cable, I mean, but the streaming software that they have where everything, I mean.
I asked Keith to look at it again, because we approached this with Todd, when Todd was the manager, we pushed it hard.
Uh huh.
And he got the cable company involved, and there's nothing in the contract that allows us to have that. I'll hit Keith up again to try to push and see what's available. And I think our contract is coming due pretty soon with Time Warner, I don't, Time Warner.
It's just, I mean, and that is the times that your battery dies, and you don't get the whole meeting, and there's a whole slew of other scenarios. But if you got, you're up on the board, and you've got somebody talking, and you've got two of you that are, that are having a conversation over here, you're awfully quiet, you're whispering, but it's enough to muffle that, and you can't hear what else is going on, anybody else speaking. So, and some people, that's the only way that they're finding out what's going on in town. I know that's how I know what's going on in town.
For a point, okay? When we built the new fire station, cable was supposed to go back in then. It was offered and everything else, and it was refused.
See, the thing is, today, I mean, I mean, I know back then, but I'm just saying, with streaming technologies that they have today, the software and the equipment, like anything, all the prices have gone down. We might not have been able to afford it 10 years ago, but we sure as heck can afford it now.
No, I'm just saying, the equipment was being offered.
Oh.
It was being offered and everything else, and we were still told no. Different management.
Find discussions. I think we should go home. I just, I want to recap one thing.
Can we move on?
The planning board can, needs to have a couple of members. Should I just go tell, not members, I'm sorry, people for that committee, for that ad hoc committee? Should I just go tell Keith, we need a couple of volunteers?
We're on the town website.
Okay.
Looking for, you know, I mean, you're going to have to come, I think you're going to have to come ask to approve it.
Well, I might as well get, I mean, I might as well get the ball over.
Are you volunteering?
No, I'm not volunteering. I think for the time, I don't know when I'm going to make it back again.
So, Dan, we need two selectmen, two selectmen or one?
One.
One selectman. We need one selectman.
There you go, Dan.
You're the chairman, so you can find us a.
We all done the chair in June, so.
Well, you're so familiar with it, you could come and join us on that committee, and help us.
It'll be like old, won't we?
Can I mention something else?
I'm not sure at this point. Every time I beat down the, I beat down the drawer.
There's a lot of other towns too, when they list their meetings, whether they be planning board, selectmen's, the meetings have packets. That means all the detail that they're going to be discussing that evening is scanned in with either as a separate thing for the agenda, or with the agenda, or even, some of them, they even link the agenda to all the documentation that they're going to be, I think that's kind of.
That sounded like a volunteer.
No, heck, no, 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 not, no.
I don't know anybody that knows how to do that stuff.
Scan a document?
I can scan a document, but not be asking me to create links.
No, 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 I mean, okay, the link thing might have been, might have been a little bit too much, but the thing is, I mean, just the information that you have, when you go to a meeting, you get a packet ahead of time, you know what you're going to be discussing. There's no reason why that shouldn't be attached to the agenda, so that everybody else understands what's going on as well.
It's not digital.
What is it?
The packets they get are digital.
What do you mean they're not digital?
We get paper.
They get paper.
They got printed from somewhere?
Right.
From where?
From the applicants or from me.
Okay, so you're scanning.
The papers are huge.
Huh?
I don't have the capability of doing the scanning of large documents.
How large can you scan?
Eleven, half by eleven.
So, the only thing you're not scanning is the blueprints?
The maps.
The maps and the blueprints.
I mean, scan. The board's already talked about this, in terms of going completely digital, where I don't have to do any kind of copy.
That'd be perfect, save a lot of paper.
Yeah.
No, guess what? We suggested turning it as, us to give us a laptop or whatever it was along the way, and we weren't qualified enough to get one yet.
I don't think what that has to do with scanning documents in. The only thing that you can't scan is the maps and the blueprints.
The discussion came up about whether or not we should go completely digital, and we, but it would cost between five and six thousand dollars to buy the tablets for everybody, because the tablets are going to run a little over nine hundred bucks each. But we'd be able to bring them in, log into the Wi-Fi, and see all of the documentation on the screen.
But I think that's a little bit more than what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about so that people have dark, the citizens that want to know what's going on, or make a decision whether it's necessary for them to come to a planning board meeting, they, you know, they see something on the agenda, and it's like, well, what's that all about? Well, you won't know until you get there, you know, it's. And also, with anybody who has a blueprint done today, or a map done, if they've gone to wherever to have it printed out, they have that in digital form. They can email it to you in the right size, so that you could put it in the packet. I mean, they're not.
Sometimes, some of that stuff though isn't that easy, but.
It's.
I would say, I would agree, a majority of the stuff can be put on.
Correct.
Because what, you know, it's CAD stuff that some of these guys use.
It's out to scale sometimes, that's a problem.
Right, it's out to scale. And if they give it to you electronically, it'd have to be in a format that you've got the software to be able to see them, which you can.
No, it gets converted to a PDF, I mean.
I think the laptop's a good idea.
Maybe copy it. I mean, maybe we take the packets once, every two weeks and take it to copy it.
Somebody tell them, I'm going to bring my laptop in, and I can see everything. We can't see you behind that laptop.
I've got queues on that too.
I know it, the same person that keeps me up at.
I don't care, I don't bring the paper, I'll deliver it in.
You get yours on the computer?
Any other business or stuff, plana?
I'll get it on my own.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
We're done.
See you next year.
No, I'm not, I'm not in a hurry.
I'm just kidding.
So, would anybody on the planning board like to work on that committee, revise, and find all of the little spots that are missing?
So, I think we have to, Donna, to your point, I think if we can get someone who understands how to use redlining, it would make it so much better for work.